...
Move to the motion to get rid of the meeting.
So move.
Okay. Meeting on the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, move forward. Notation of the open meetings act is posted in the back of the room. Go along with the chants.
Yep.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Self here. Deb, Melissa.
Yes.
Mike is excuse. I approve the agenda for tonight. Any changes? Any adjustments? Any adjustments? Not me. Can you motion approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
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 Provin' you know? Motion carried. Move on to the consent agenda. Is it all right we can move to the financial report? No questions on that? Go on to the claims. Questions on those here? Okay. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm making motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
Move the second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no? Motion carried. Just have them move on to junior, uh, the junior pirate branch and the student presentation for us.
All right, we are very honored and flattered to be the newest business in town. Uh, we had our ribbon cutting ceremony last week. So our junior pirate branch is our savings program that we've talked to you several times about. And, um, in coordination with Midwest Bay, we could finally say that our doors are open and business is booming. So I'm gonna let these fantastic tellers kind of illustrate to you what they do at each station. And start by introducing your name.
Lauren Craft. And what's gonna you do is come to, we have like a whole kinda rectangle square type deal set up with that in the middle of it. Supposedly you do come pick up a deposit slip, looks something like this. You write your first and last name. Anyway, you can go, but teacher, which we have a whole teacher list right here. It's something like this setup. John Doe, Miss Goots. They, they write the amount that they brought, three, three dollars and fifty cents, and then the date. And then looks very good, and then they leave that spot open. And the date is right here, and the write it all down. They take this and give your order to registration.
Hello, and I am Mason Lipton. And in the registrator, registering table, you fi- they, the person tells you it's great and then you find it behind. And then I, you take the money or deposit slip and then give it to the, um, teller.
Um, hi, my name is Cara Hoffman. And once we deposit the slip where it says teller initials, we initial it. And then in the, um, that thing. Um, you open it up and there's this like check looking paper. There's this check looking paper. And we write how many deposits it's made. And then once we're all done with that, we put everything in there and hand it to the prize operator.
And, um, after what day they have, uh, how much day they deposit, deposited, they get to pick out a prize of what day they deposited. How much? Oh yeah, but in my name's page.
Wait, I forgot to tell him your name.
And, um, you know.
And one other thing that we do is every time somebody comes to the branch, they get a sticker. So you'll see Lauren likes to keep, oh, we have a couple of them that keep their stickers on their shirt. So every student walks away with a little token of appreciation from us just to show our gratitude for being at the bank. Uh, one other thing, besides all the things that these guys said, um, I have to boast about our fabulous teller station here. Uh, Dr. Bernicker built it by hand.
Wow.
And, um, it is fabulous. All, we store all of our stuff in there. We just wheel it in the lunchroom every Thursday morning because we are open every Thursday morning at seven fif- or seven thirty. And, uh, we are super grateful for that beautiful piece. Do you guys have any questions for us?
How many days are you open?
Every Thursday morning.
Every Thursday morning.
Yep, seven thirty to eight fifteen.
What grade level does get to come to the bank?
Four through six.
Four through six.
Tellers, tellers are four through six.
Tellers, oh, so.
So we school through six get to deposit.
You have a lot of, that's true.
Yeah.
Sure.
Do they take turns?
Yes, we have, we do.
We took the whole interview.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, we had it again.
With, yeah.
Yep, we were all interviewed for the job.
And we got this little thing that said, congratulations, so and so, you got the job.
Yeah, we did.
How long do you keep your job?
Until sixth grade.
You can't.
Wow. It's a half of this. He's a fourth grader, I had this for a couple of years.
How many tellers do you have?
Uh, twenty-two?
Sure. I don't remember the final number.
We're twenty.
But we, yeah, right around twenty.
You get, you save all your money, we're gonna do it until you like, end of year, sixth grade. Sixth grade, and then you get your money at, when you graduate until.
It goes to the real bank downtown now?
No, you get it. They, they depo- they have like a whole computer set up at the end of the table. Cause after prizes, they hand it over to, um.
Corby?
Yeah, Corby, and he types it all on the computer, saves all the money in the bank. Then at sixth grade, at the end of the year when you graduate and to go into junior high, this building, you get it.
That check back?
Yeah, check.
Get the money that you deposited that.
So on average, we have about this many tellers every Thursday morning. Um, Jamie and Corby, uh, designed a shift schedule so kids know for the rest of the year when their shift is. Uh, besides these guys, myself, Kevin, um, Leganfelter, Jamie Norris, and Corby Forbes are at the bank every Thursday morning with us. So they are the workhorses and we're just behind the scenes helping support them at this point.
Yay. Nice job, guys.
Any questions?
So if you're an adult, you're too old. You won't take.
Unless if you work at the real bank.
Good answer. Thank you, that was wonderful, thank you.
Great new program, thanks for coming.
And I love your bank, Dr. Bernicker did a beautiful job.
Thank you.
So Mrs. Hudson picked up this idea, uh, Wayne Elementary does it, I don't know who else and Mrs. Hudson can explain, but she's, you know, that's, I don't, it's rare that somebody raised that's a brand new idea. We usually just steal from somebody else, you know, ideas, and we bring them to our own and that's fine. But I think this is a rare experience in elementary schools. This is not incredibly common, so, um, Mrs. Hudson did some research and went, went to Wayne.
We did, yep. Kevin, Jamie, Corby and I, all went to Wayne.
You know, some Midwest bank reps. Obviously, it's a good, you know, program that they have helped with, but doesn't happen without Jen's leadership either.
Move on into number eight, public comment. Is there anybody who wants to speak tonight? Okay, not, we'll move on to the discussion items. Number nine, board of mill, each thirty through forty.
These couple of pages talk, just address community engagement. And our folks that are going to Omaha, they'll be, they'll have lots of opportunities for breakout sessions, uh, that align around, uh, community engagement. It's a complicated thing for boards, quite honestly, because you, you, you meet once a month at, at minimum at a regular meeting and you have public comments. And oftentimes, that's your best opportunity for, to, to get feedback from your community. But it, it is more than that and it takes a deliberate effort that not, that I think few boards really do or do well to engage their community. So, uh, I, I would expect that, you know, those going to Omaha will have an opportunity maybe to pick up some, some ideas or suggestions, uh, on how to make sure that our community has more than just a public comment opportunity once a month to be involved and to share input.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good idea to get the community involved, it's just about how, how you go about doing it, so often do it. That type of thing, so hopefully we pick up some ideas.
When we were in Norfolk, the leadership conference without a conference?
Uh, yeah, just the area.
Yeah, I liked the idea of having a public comment in regards to the agenda and then a public comment afterwards. I thought that was a great idea. Just to have people be available to have two separate, um, conversation points where they can talk, just talk the agenda and then bring other things to our attention.
I don't want you wanna do that every, every meeting, cause that could go on for a half thousand minutes, so.
Yeah, we'd have, if, if, I mean, if you get close to the end of the meeting, you might have an additional hour of discussion.
Could be.
Eventually, if you were, if you had another session during the year or something, or number times a year, how many times a year. I think that'd be a, a way to do it too. Yeah, we wanna, wanna make it feel like your voice is, you know, heard of, so. But also, there's nothing wrong with somebody picking up before calling it the day after, right? They're all available, you know? There's opportunities there too. Okay. Looks like we had a couple of committees to meet, negotiations and Americanism tonight. We'll start off with the negotiations committee, which guys.
We're here in charge now. Well, we're still, we're still, it's going great. I mean, we have a great staff to work with. We have not settled on anything. We're gonna do some, um, talk to some other teachers, I mean, boards in Omaha about certain topics, but I feel really good about it. And I think this teaching staff does also. I'm not sure how long we can share, cause we have a seven.
Is there a deadline on this?
Yes, March, but we'll, we'll settle much.
We're pretty much. We want to have two more mandatory meetings, right?
You're required to have four. You're required to have four, but if you reach agreement before.
You can settle it for seven.
Yes, yeah, so in our next meeting, I would, I would be hopeful and expect that you will, you will probably reach agreement with PPA. Maybe not, but, uh, we're not in, we won't be in danger at all of coming up against that deadline. We never have. And, uh, things are as, as cordial and respectful and professional as they always have been. So we're, we're just a real fortunate school district.
I, I would guess that we settled soon. It's just fine tuned.
We scheduled a meeting for the twenty-first, actually.
Oh, okay. I mean, first, is that a Monday night?
That's next Tuesday.
No.
No.
Well, let's see.
Very Tuesday, it's the twenty-first, that's.
Okay.
I, I think we had a.
Maybe.
Well, that's encouraging news, eh?
Yes, it's gone well.
It's all gone very well.
So it's good.
Represent their staff well.
Good, yeah.
We, we don't have a for sure date set, we didn't talk about, we have that before we go away to Thanksgiving, but we're, we're in no great hurry.
All right, well, what did the Americanism committee talk about tonight? Take that one?
It was short, um, basically because we're doing all the right things. Um, Kyle and Jen, Dr. Al, uh, talked to us a little bit anyway about all they, they do. Teach the pledge allegiance, the standard of the planter, um, materials are over there on the table anyway for American history, social studies. They keep the staff notified of, uh, any, uh.
Civic requirements.
Civic, thank you, anyway civic duties, so, you know, is there any, we're aware of. So, I mean, uh, we used to do these meetings once a year, now we're required to do it twice a year. Really has a lot to talk about, to true.
Everything, all requirements.
It's a lot, everything's, we used to have a small list, anyway, they're just following, it's a small list. They're going above and beyond if they ask me.
I agree.
Call us a chance.
I agree.
So, yeah, we're, we're doing just fine, so.
Um, and we did discuss in the near future, getting some new social studies books in elementary that are a little bit more engaging and challenging.
They're due for revision in the cycle, so, um, yeah, generally, every, every seven years or somewhere thereabouts. Social studies can review, could be, could be next year, a year after.
Okay, sounds good, thank you guys. Thank you committees for meeting, I had a negotiation meeting quite often, so. Appreciate that extra time. All right, move on to number eleven, evaluation superintendent, see policy three oh two oh five. Pretty much the process is spelled out there. We will do that when we go into closed session at the end of this meeting. We will compile some in orientals on an evaluation form and come together with the consensus and present that to Dr. Al. I believe that this will be in two weeks before the December meeting.
Yeah.
Have to have it back to you.
Yeah. And then, um, have a discussion, we can open and close session, generally open session simple in December. Um, but then I'll, I'll also, at that time, ask you to renew my contract for another year. And we'll have some probably brief negotiations on the terms of that contract. And generally, that's done in the December meeting. We've, we've pushed it to January before, so that's, that's happened, you know, precedent for that. But generally, December is the superintendent contract offer.
Well, that will come up later. Nothing else, any questions, we'll have to move on to reviewing some policy. Seven oh two sections, seven oh two, oh one, two and three.
Yeah, so, uh, seven oh two oh one, you notice is two sentences, just essentially mentions what your fiscal year is, uh, which is September one to August thirty-one, right? So, um, school districts fiscal year, which it, it, you know, sometimes we, the school leaders are like, we wish we could push that back a month. Because we start, we start a school year in a previous fiscal, right? We start school mid-August and the fiscal year, and we start spending money, you know, for the twenty-three, twenty-four year in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal budget year. But anyway, we, we, we all manage it, it's money. So, uh, seven oh two oh one just simply indicates that. Uh, oh two and oh three, we actually revised, uh, here just within the last year and a half by statutory requirement. So the language in seven oh two oh two and seven oh two oh three, which spells out the, the, the planning preparation and schedules of the budget, okay? It's all laid out specific in statutes, um, and then the adoption process, the, the steps to go through and the information that must be provided on the budget resolution document is in seven oh two oh three. So the unicameral is naturally gonna be quite precise and specific with the mandates that they, uh, lay out to school districts for, for budgeting. So, um, pretty simple review, really, there's, there's nothing that we could change, even if we really thought, some, we didn't like something that's statutory requirement.
I figured it would all update, cause I think we have public hearing stuff in there.
Yep.
I'm assuming we, you know, meet all these requirements or all this.
For sure, yeah.
Your, all your documents.
Yep, go, it's a pretty good guiding document, quite honestly, you know, as, and no matter how many budget cycles you go through as a superintendent, you know, it's still a good checklist, you know, to go through. They moved the, the date from September twenty to September thirty. They moved it back ten days on what your budgets are due, onto the auditors and department of ed, primarily because of the joint public hearings and the timeline of that joint public hearing, which is, this was year two of those pink postcard, uh, meetings. So there's still some, there could be any number of tweaks on any given year with regard to the process or the dates.
I'll update that one. Any other questions on that? Okay, not, we'll move on to number thirteen, talk about the roller coach storage.
So, uh, as we indicated over the past couple of months as we were having this discussion, you know, we knew that we wanted the coach to be, uh, housed indoors. Uh, we don't have the facility for that, so then, you know, I think Bob would have more information than I at this point on any progress that's been made on how we can fabricate a current bus shed, uh, to fit the coach. Uh, we got rid of three junk buses that were in there, so there's space, it's just we can't get it in the door, can't get it in the overhead door, so. Uh, so Bob has been looking at that, it, it, you know, the timing of the year is not good to get it done expeditiously. Toby's generous enough to allow us to use space in his new shop. Uh, and it fits just sweet in there. I wish it was the bay all the way to the north, cause then it would really be out of the way, but it's in that first bay between, uh, the old showroom and, and the shop. So, uh, but that's not a permanent solution and I don't know really how, how long we can take advantage of that generosity, uh, because he'll have, you and Jack will have a lot of farm machinery, but I think they intend to, to fill most of that up with. So, so we may have another temporary before we're ready. In the meantime, I, I feel we should offer Toby a little bit of rent money, a hundred bucks a month, which is, you know, just really nothing, but, but just so he, and he doesn't certainly feel taken for granted, I'm sure. But I think it would be, uh, a good gesture on our part, um, to, uh, to do that. So, you know, a hundred bucks a month for two or three months, or maybe six or eight before we're ready, I don't know, but, um, I just wanted to share with you that I, I intend to do that and just cut that from the athletic fund.
Are there any other options, temporary?
Well, I, I brainstormed with a couple of folks who know better than I, who has that kind of potential storage space here in town. Uh, we haven't, we haven't asked anybody yet, uh, but right now, we were just kinda thinking, well, who's got, who's got that much space, you know, to, to allow that? In a worst case, it can sit out, it's sat out its whole life, as far as I know. But I, I really don't think we want, want it to. Uh, so, so we're, we're working on it and I think we're confident that we can fabricate our current bus shed to fit it. That's just finding somebody with the time to do it and the right time of year to do that kinda work.
Okay, next, next breaker, next one, it's like, whether it needs space. Well, Toby gives you, you know, if they do need the space, I'm sure he'll let us know, you know, give us a full heads up.
Yeah.
We bound to be somewhere else.
We, we, we probably could, uh, but it, it's, it's been running like a champ since that first day when the Hannafree's host split. After that, uh.
That was a clear, that's a daily girls?
No, it was the day before when I took it to use it for my, uh, CDL test. Did, the bus did not pass inspection, let me just add that. So our, our friends at Navigator, I, I called them up immediately, cause I had eight-thirty time and D M D's not incredibly flexible. Uh, I was gonna shit this sometime, I'm close, but, uh, so I, I get out of the bus and I come to the back and all this red fluid is just spilling out of the back. Now, I'm no mechanic, but I knew that wasn't good. Uh, so I opened the thing and it was just, it was just a little cracked couple of rubber hoses. And I called Navigator and he was exceptional. He, he was there in thirty minutes with another coach and his mechanic. So while I did my C D L on, on their loaner, they fixed ours and, and we were really up good to go. But, uh, it was a nervous morning, for sure. But that was better than I did it there and not on the way to Aurora the next day.
Yep.
So do you have anyone else making their C D L?
Yeah, uh, we got chat command, uh, licensed, uh, so he had, just like me, he had to go from a C to a B with air brakes. Uh, and you've got Bob and you've got, I think, somebody, I think, I think Gail Wolzel, uh, has that licensing, so I mean, we're, 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 we're covered pretty well, uh, for, for drivers for it. So it will be sitting when we really wish it was transporting kids for lack of driver, um, we'll be in, we'll be in good shape. So, so far, we've taken girls basketball, we've taken, uh, the guys in ties and ladies ladies, uh, we took one act today, uh, we took, we take juniors.
As you're talking about, government day?
Oh, we took seniors, county government day, thank you, Kelly. So, I mean, we're, she's in service.
Sounds good, then. Move on to the action items. Discussed if possible action to approve the purchase of a new valuable system. You have some specifics on that?
Yeah, I'm gonna refer to Mr. Schmidt on why something costs twice what a person could imagine, but I'd like equipment.
Uh, this is something Kim had brought to me for two years, updating the system that we have, so it'd be new poles, new pads, new net, new ladder, all that stuff would be updated. So everything you see during a volleyball game, it'd be new. Um, so the pads and the net are the most expensive, right now, we only have three nets. So, uh, our game net we use as a practice net as well, so if something were to happen, we don't have another one. And so when we were talking about getting another net, I said we should probably just look at what it would cost to update the whole system. Um, just because the ladder and stand is not awesome, officials have been telling us, so we wanted to get something a little bit newer. Um, I had Gail look at seeing if we could put this into the tartan gym, the old one, so we could use that, but the standards and the holes in the floor are different. Um, so we can't quite make it tall enough, so I don't know if we could make that work or not based off of what we have. Uh, but as of right now, it doesn't look like we would be able to do that, cause I was looking at being able to use that, cause right now in the tartan gym, when we have games, um, officials have to stand up on padded boxes and stuff like that. So I wanted to try and update that as well to make it better suited for JV games, junior high games, things like that. So.
Suppose they're buying back the old system or you don't get any value out of that?
No. No, you can't do that. No, so, there's not a whole lot of options with that.
So, will this new system, Mr. Schmidt, it'll just only be brought up for competition?
Correct. It's only used for games.
Or it won't be used for practice?
No.
So, you'll, you'll still use the old?
The net, the net, the poles, everything is only used for games. So. Because right now we're using one net and the poles for practice and games, so.
Is it easier to put up than the other system or?
That would be a great Gail question. Because I've never put up the system, I would assume that it would be easier to put up just because it is newer, it's carbon fiber poles, so they're not supposed to bend. I know right now when you tighten the net, they kind of do this, right, Gail?
And you, we have a situation with our floor, especially at the beginning of the season, where the floor actually heaves just a little bit at the jump, in the jump circle. So, it's pretty hard to, you know, you have to finagle the net just right to make it as legal as possible until we kind of level out. It has helped since we've got air conditioning in there, it doesn't last as long, but that floor moves and then it straightens out some and, and, uh, I haven't seen the new system that you're looking at, so, but I'm sure it's fairly simple.
Yeah. Some of the officials feel a little bit like this up there, is that kind of a safety issue with the stand?
Do you have a picture of it?
Did I give you that quote with the picture? Go to sports, home boards and see.
You could use the, our old stand in the Tartan Gym or, or you'd have to stand on a box if you got any system in the.
That would transfer over to.
Yeah, that way you, you wouldn't have a stand of some type.
Have we kind of planned on spending some money on updating?
Yeah, we've had this conversation for a couple of years in a row. So, I, we've, we've had some turnover in the coaching ranks there and so, sometimes when that happens, you, you don't make some necessary upgrades in the equipment. As a new coach, maybe, you know, just may not advocate for something like that in that expense or, we know, hidden in the years through the Kim, but, uh, which isn't to say, we, I, I trust the coaches when they say we have some substandard equipment, I trust Mr. Schmidt for sure when I says, we do have some, some old, substandard equipment. I think this classifies.
Anybody know how old that is, our current set of, what were your members?
I think Gail, it probably predates myself or Mr. Schmidt.
It's been changed since I've been here, but it, it's probably at least fifteen to sixteen years old, those poles.
It's not the super heavy ones we used to have, so.
No, it's not. Did you use those general, super, super heavy ones? What year would that have been, do you think?
Five, six, seven, eight, and before two thousand ten?
Yeah.
Good old days.
Those were super, super heavy.
These should be quite a bit lighter than.
They're only nineteen pounds per pole. I'll make a motion to purchase a new volleyball net system in the amount of eight thousand twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Move a second to purchase a new volleyball net system. Melissa? Yeah?
Yes.
Self, yes, Wyatt?
Yep.
James?
Yep.
Motion carried five oh. All right, we'll move on to number fifteen then, discuss to take possible action for the purchase of new track unit. That's in the rotation, I assume.
Yep, uh, we were going to do it two years ago, but we had to get volleyball uniforms because we didn't have enough. Uh, then we were going to do it this year, but we had to get football uniforms because we didn't have enough, so I keep pushing it back. Um, right now when we send our girls out, they have three different uniforms that they wear. Um, so, the big thing is we just wanted to get everybody uniform and looking the same. Uh, junior high wise, they wear T-shirts and shorts, so we were going to move these down to the junior highs so they have a uniform to wear. Um, so really it just gets everybody looking the same and gets our junior high uniform as well, so.
Yeah, they'll look nice on junior high.
Yeah.
Actually.
Because I don't know when was it your track uniforms purchased?
Yeah, they're old too, we've hodgepodge them for years.
Probably used them for cross country before we did cross country.
Yep, we did for a while.
Girls and boys?
Yep.
Girls and boys both?
Yep, there, I think there's forty girls and forty boys, no, thirty-five girls and thirty-five boys is what they're looking at.
How many does that forty?
Thirty-five of each, so. Is it forty each, kind of forty each?
You've got some big junior high classes.
Yes.
Are you counting for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Be something you could add if you need to buy a few extra or something, no problem.
Yeah, because the, the company we're going through, you can, it's the same one that we use for the football uniforms, so once you make a purchase, if one gets ruined, you can just order one, because it's not a jersey that goes out of style or anything, so.
I'll make a motion to purchase new track unit in the amount of seven thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars.
Second on that?
I'll second.
Second. Move a second then to, uh, purchase a new track unit for seventy, or forty-four dollars. Self, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
James?
Yep.
Melissa?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried five oh. Moving on to number sixteen, discuss to take possible action on service agreements for the HVACs.
This is for the elementary, um, we've had, those were, uh, those units are now going on year three and were, uh, trained, installed and has serviced them. Uh, so the advocates asked if they could bid on the service, I said, well, sure, uh, facility advocates takes care of this building. Um, so I just put all of them in front of you, a lot of details, I mean, the main thing I suppose probably the bottom line of the expense. I mean, I, I don't necessarily have a recommendation, I think we've been served well, I mean, Gail could maybe speak to whether we think Train has served us well. Uh, I think the facility advocates serve us well, I don't know if there's a benefit to having the same company take care of our entire campus. Um, facility advocates use Volkman's to a great extent out of Norfolk, uh, so if you're taking a local service compared to, we've had folks from Omaha and folks from Sioux City and, and elsewhere and haven't always been pleased necessarily with the timing or, um, trip charge. Oh, we forgot something, we'll come back tomorrow, second trip charge. I mean, so we, we try to watch for that a little bit and don't like to them take advantage of it for sure, but, um, so, there is a, a, a bid from facility advocates, uh, for year one seventy-nine eighty and a bid from Train for eight-one ninety-seven, about a two hundred dollar difference. And again, I would expect the service to be comparable.
Gail?
Yeah?
How do you feel about both companies?
Um.
You work with them both?
I, I know Train, like Dr. Earl said, it's always taken care of us well. They do a lot of the technical things remotely, we still get billed for that, um, if we do that, but it, they, it does save them from coming here all the time. Uh, and facility advocates, I'm sure they do the same. Um, where they are located, I don't know who would do that, but I'm sure their Volkmans, when they're here, working on this side of the street, they're very easy to work with, those guys are always very knowledgeable and easy to get along with, so.
Thank you.
Reasonable.
Is it all Train equipment on the elementary or now that we redid it, there's some different brands?
Uh, that side is all mostly Train, Midjibishi, by them, so, yeah.
The only thing I'd say is that Train, you know, it's Train equipment, so.
Well, the, the, uh, the most, many of the folks at facility advocates have worked either with Rassism or Train or both. So, the, the equipment is not, would not be foreign to, to anybody that is, uh, you know, handy with regard to HVAC maintenance and service. So, I, yeah, I mean, I, I didn't want to just make an assumption, just to what we've always done, I thought I would, even though it's just a couple hundred dollar difference.
And Train did give us a year two and three contract?
No.
I'd assume we did the other things that were, were similar.
Dr. Earl, with, uh, with, between the two bids, Train comes twice a year, how often would facility advocates come or is this the same number of times?
Twice a year, April and October.
Eight, two times?
Yeah.
But Train would only have one.
Well, they, they come twice a year as well.
Two hundred dollars, it's two hundred dollars.
I'm always happy, I've had to, the closer you can keep the service guys that operate the.
Norfolk versus Omaha.
If it's all under one, it's probably simpler, it would be simpler, it would be, because if you get a problem over here, you have technicians here to hop over. It just, yeah, it means it simplifies things, even close. One, one in, in certain old buildings, I don't see a reason not to.
Cheaper than transparent in year two and three.
I, I would go with the silver, I mean, that just, but, this is for more than that. Dr. Earl, you said that it is a little unnerving to you that you had had to wait over Train to get here from this stuff?
Oh, no, not, not necessarily, I mean, uh, I think their, their service is, their service has been good. We had frustration with Rassism more than Train.
Okay.
And, you know, as Gail said, a lot of the equipment now is way more high-tech than what it replaced, right? So, so they can do some maintenance remotely, um, both sides can.
Sure.
Yeah, and, and we're, we're pretty fortunate, we now have mostly newer, newer equipment on top of both roofs. Um, both are, as expected, you know, working well, we don't, we, we haven't seen the thousands of dollars every month or every other month that, that seem that we had going back a couple of years, uh, which would make sense and you hope and expect that. So, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not going to make a recommendation, I mean, I think your conversation is leading you in one direction, but that's.
You don't have a preference, I say simplify it, you know, with one, one service. You might be able to negotiate service kind of, as old buildings, as one contract, I have a little lottery problem negotiating that too.
Well, Tim will be able to talk to these people right to their president, right to his face on Thursday.
I'll see him, he's usually there.
Except the kind of.
Byron, Byron will be there, and so will his boss, Dan.
Oh, his boss, okay.
And so will Train.
June now.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept a bid from facility advocates in the seventy-nine eighty, provide service maintenance, the elementary HVAC units. Second. Move a second then to accept a bid from facility advocates, seventy-nine eighty. Yeah?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
James?
Yep.
Yes.
Install, yes. Motion carried five oh. Move on to reports, starting with the activity director report.
Um, just wanted to say congrats to volleyball team, they were district runner-up, football team, they were district champions this year. Uh, winter sports season kicks off today with practices, we have our winter sports kickoff Friday night with the Booster Club. Last week or two weeks, two weeks ago, music went to the opera.
Two, two weeks ago, yeah.
Two weeks ago, yeah, the music program went to the opera in Omaha a couple of weeks ago. Uh, junior high vocal clinic and conference choir clinic was a couple of weeks ago. Uh, Battle of the Bands, we went down and won, that's two out of three years we've won that, so, uh, they, they're doing pretty good.
Small but mighty.
Along with the band, Weston Hoffman was named to Nebraska All-State Band, so he'll be in Lincoln practicing Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then they do a performance at the Leeds Center Friday, or Saturday night, so, um, I text Katie today, she never had anybody make All-State Band, so I'm not real sure when our last one was. I was told Andrew Lindert felt it was the last one, but.
Two thousand four, last.
Definitely. So, uh, and then one act started today and then they perform in conference again tomorrow and then their public performance is November twenty-sixth at six o'clock. I gave you guys a sheet about conference realignment, um, on the front of that, there's eight schools there. We had a meeting the other day talking about possibly starting a different conference, um, and just trying to get feelers out about that. Um, a lot of it is, uh, size of the conference we're in right now, there's seventeen schools in it. And so, when you have tournaments and regular season and scheduling, there's a lot of issues. Um, when you look at the size of the schools, you have everywhere from C one all the way down to D two. So, our rationale for trying to look at this is getting all C two, D one sized schools, trying to get all similar sizes. And we wanted to go with something that's just an eight-team conference, so it makes, um, tournaments easier. Uh, we can have a true conference champion during the regular season, doing one act and speech, quiz bowl, all that stuff, it's a lot easier with just eight schools versus trying to get sixteen together. Um, and so that was a lot of our conversation, um, and trying to just simplify things, because a lot of the schools we get talked to are from the Lewis and Clark, um, which is seventeen schools, and then the other ones would be from the N B C, Ibrera Valley Conference, which has, uh, really fourteen schools in that one. So, everybody's trying to find a conference that's about the same size and again, get schools about the same size. Because we ran into a few issues just trying to get decisions made within the conference and trying to do what's best for kids. Um, and sometimes not all schools are heard, so it's just hard to come to a general consensus on a lot of decisions with a conference that big. So, that is where we are at. We have one meeting, like I said, we hosted on October thirtieth, we're going to host another one on November twenty-first. So, uh, we did start a live document with all the schools and just, so if you guys have questions, like what your concerns would be, questions you have to ask all the other schools, um, we have a document, so if you have those, you can let me know, I can put those, uh, questions down and we can have a conversation about that at our next meeting.
Can we get better radio and TV coverage?
We're not quite the Big Ten.
Just checking.
We can call N C N and see what we come up with though. Did I miss anything, Dr. Earl?
I, no, I, I don't think so, the, the schools that, it, um, we, we hosted the discussion just due to geography. It was not a plain dude-led, um, coup of the Lewis and Clark and the N B C, I mean, I, uh, but there will, this will irritate some schools and, and I think already has. Uh, I, the athletic director at Hardington, uh, is, and Kyle have been doing, I think, a lot of the communicating and, and the leading of the discussion, somebody has to. Um, and to determine, you know, who to invite to an initial discussion, um, do the.
Yep, they have the list of schools.
Yeah, so you can see who was around the table and, uh, every one of those schools was interested in the second conversation. And we did ask everybody to introduce to their board in the November meeting. This conversation is going on and you were likely aware, not necessarily maybe, but maybe aware, that we were participating in this discussion and that in December we'll, we'll hopefully be in a position to ask for full board support to continue to vote for them. Uh, so that, uh, we have a twenty-five, twenty-six school year rollout of what this will hopefully be, because quite honestly, we, we kind of. be, because quite honestly, we, we kind of hope this works out because we think it's a better fit geographically and for, for size of school and, and just opportunities. Seventeen school conference, we're already in two divisions, we're the Clark division, so a lot of the things we do in our conference are just Clark division, you know, to a certain degree, not completely, but. So, it, it's, right, right now, it's a discussion, but we're, we're, we are hopeful that it produces a new eight-team Northeast Nebraska Athletic Conference.
Can I call like the Big Eight?
That was a name that's been thrown out there.
I like it.
The Big Eight?
Pac eight, whatever.
I don't know, the Pac twelve died, so I get a little nervous I can call it the Pac.
Big eight died too, Bill.
No. So, if you guys have questions, just email me and I can have those to our document, things that you need to find out or would like to know.
Can anyone eighteen, first school report?
I don't know if I have anything specific to add unless you have questions on there. We kind of shared our branch statistics, so we will continue to share that on a monthly basis with you guys.
Did want to point out Jocelyn Anderson received her American degree, which is the highest degree you can get in the FFA, National FFA, so that was a pretty big deal for, for Mr. Kement and our FFH after, so wanted to throw that out there.
Has he had some other ones recently?
Recently, I don't know for sure, you know? So.
Yeah, they just got back from nationals.
Mm-hmm.
I just have one question for you, Kyle, on the, what, what is like the major disadvantage going to this smaller conference? Is there any? You know what I mean?
Making people angry, I guess.
Oh, that doesn't bother me. I do that every day.
No, I mean, that was, our whole big discussion was just trying to get kids more opportunities to do stuff and really just get all schools the same size that offer the same amount of activities, so.
That's, that'd really be good for the JV, because you just don't have that, a lot of schools don't have that competition.
That was the thing that got brought up, was a lot of schools only offer two quarters of JV or some don't even play any, so hopefully getting schools all the same size, we can play full JV games and get them, you know, a full night of games, so.
Have the girls ever been to state volleyball?
One year. Eighteen, eight, two?
Eighty-two, eighty-three, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Krista Machot was senior that year.
That was?
My sister.
No.
No, no, my sister was a junior, she played on the team. We should have, but we got beat by the number you'd see and still better not happen.
I hear you.
You want to start to stay tight.
As close as we could get.
Yeah, well, congratulations, Kyle, on your season, your football and the volleyball. They were both fun to watch.
Yep.
I really like it on TV, just telling you, just nice and warm in there.
I just wish you could hear it, that's the only thing I.
Yeah, you're right.
That would be nice if you could hear the announcer.
I thought it was because I'm old, too.
Well, I can't hear it unless I'm not putting on a thing.
Well, that makes me feel better, but I just appreciate even watching it, so thanks for entertainment this fall. Girls and the boys in the lot, be proud.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
S R two is done, thank goodness. We received every dime that was allotted to us three years ago. The last request was for a thousand and one dollars and Kelly and I did about two days worth of paperwork to get that thousand and one dollars, but that's okay. S R three, just, I always want to make sure that you have an update every month until all of those federal funds are expended, so you can see what our intent is for the remaining thirty-two thousand nine eighty of S R three. That was a five hundred thousand dollar allotment, five eighty, and we're down to thirty-two nine eighty. I mentioned that I completed my class B C D L, we had a Rule ten safety audit, so we have a few, a few minor adjustments based on the, the recommendation of our, of our safety auditor, nothing dramatic and nothing of any significant expense to the district. The audit is done and uploaded, the A F R is done and uploaded, we should have copies any day from our auditor. So, you'll, you'll all get a booklet, we're under budget and every fund, so that's, that's the big takeaway this year, otherwise, many of the comments are the same as in previous years and such, so. Good experience, we've been working with these folks now, it's about year five, they know us very, very well, we know them very well, they're a little shorthanded, so it was a little bit different experience compared to previous years. Kelly, do you have any comments about the audit experience?
No, it went real well, they, they are understaffed by two folks. I know, they came to see us on Thursday, one of the guys already had forty hours in, but they usually do a, a field day in the summertime and they didn't do that this year, so I knew we were a little bit behind, but a lot of it's the same things because we are a small district and we do have one person doing things. I do a lot of everything, you know, I cut the checks, I do the reconciliations and so forth, but we get dinged on that stuff every year because we don't have the, the bandwidth to have that many people, but you know, like somebody counts tangles receipts twice, two, three times, I know you guys do that, so, and I don't deal with cash, so, but you'll see a lot of the same things we've seen from here to here.
Elementary roof repair update, you can see that the, a nice splash of red around the perimeter of the elementary, you know, looks good, the gutters and down spots and the finish flashing on, and so it'd be nice next year for sure at this time or the end of summer when the west wing is done, and so right now, we've got kind of two looks to it and that's the way it is, but it definitely looks sharper with that red. If you've seen the gym exterior, those panels are about done, painstakingly so, so those, those old brown panels at the top of the gym are now red and it, and it just, it's sharp, it's crisp, you know, looks good, all paid for. We already received a check for kitchen hood. Now, it wasn't for the full amount, the rest must be coming at some other time, we're kind of holding on to that, that'll go to Volkman's because they're the ones that got the bid approved by insurance. So, insurance has been fine, we're well over a million dollars. I don't have it down to the penny, you know, once we get done, I'll get an audit from our insurance company on all the claims that were paid out. They've, you know, really been, been pretty doggone good. I, I don't believe any of the moisture that we've had since the temp roof was done and now the permanent roof that we've had any water advantages, and we shouldn't expect any for sure, or any water in the interior. Guarantee's been great for sure to work with. We're looking next summer to maybe add a little extended roof all the way over our walk-in cooler, so on the back entrance to the kitchen, that little overhead door, there's a couple of pieces that were added over the years. We're, we're wanting to cover all of that, including our walk-in, which now has a, it's got an insulation wrapper on it, but it'd be good to kind of protect that with a, with a roof. The whole thing won't be enclosed, but it'll have, it'll be a lean-to look in the back, which nobody sees, but it'll protect that and it'll get water all the way to the grass and then, which will go north, because right now, it's, water comes on concrete back into the school. You know, so we've, we've got a few issues, now that'll be an expense to us, that was in store from the Radec who's been here, our general contractors, like, we can handle that, you know, so building and grounds, we'll look at that and I'll strongly recommend that we approve, you know, that bid to take care of that, and then they'll do what they're going to do next summer and, and we'll be good, so I think we've, we've been blessed. We have two nice checks that you approved tonight, one for the city, one for Methodist Church, that, that we're happy to provide, it was for twice the amount that each, that either expected. So, for the Methodist Church in particular, I would guess that that will, that likely is greater than their weekly receipts and the collection plate, so we hope that that, that they found that whatever minor inconvenience they had was, and, and they were easy, certainly great to work with, so happy to do that. The, the garage is, is done, we got electricity, we got heat, we got lights, so we've been running an extension cord for the better part of a year. It's nice, it's, it's a terrific six-stall heated garage, so in the vision that we had for that a couple of years ago, it took longer and cost more than we anticipated, but it is a nice facility, so it's, it's for sure good to have that done. State School Board Convention starts one o'clock on Wednesday, I will leave here at nine o'clock, so confirm for me if you'd like to ride. Tim, Mike, Deb, Melissa scheduled to go to Omaha, I'll send confirmation.
But the rooms start on Wednesday night, right?
The, yes, yes, we go down Wednesday, we go down Wednesday and it's Tuesday night, one o'clock is opening afternoon session on Wednesday, but I'll send some confirmation details. Deb, I think I know what you, what you saw and I can, I can explain that.
All right.
So, there's, yes, enrollment summary meetings, our district vacation and sick balance, and that is all I have for you.
Would you happen to have an agenda for this school report?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Did you get one emailed?
I did not get one emailed.
What? I had one emailed, for sure.
I know, I do, I like to look ahead of time, I have sessions I want to.
All right, well, I don't have anything for president to put, but we need to move into the closed session for superintendent's presentation.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for the superintendent's.
You gotta read that.
I'll make a motion that we enter closed session for the purposes of evaluation of job performance of a person when necessary to prevent needless injury to the reputation of a person and if such person has not requested a public meeting. That all I got to say?
Yep.
Second. Moving second, we're in closed session, we need to roll call. James?
Yep.
Wyatt?
Snow, yes, yeah.
Melissa? Going to closed session. Motion carried by vote.